Okay, everybody. I'm gonna go ahead and call the city council meeting to order. You guys, I'm gonna call the city council meeting to order for tonight, December 6th. Would you join me? Or, excuse me, it's December 4th. But, yes, please stand and join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is in its essence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For roll call, everyone is here except for Mayor Engen and John Wilkins. And otherwise, everyone's here. That empty chair is where I usually sit, but I'm here. Now it's time to, well, we have minutes to approve from November 27th. Are there any changes to those minutes? Seeing none, they are approved. And now it's time to schedule the committee meetings for the week. Ms. Raybein.
Have a full slate of committee meetings this coming Wednesday, December 6th. The Public Safety and Health Committee will meet from 10:00 a.m. until 10:15. Public Works will follow. Is everybody okay? All righty. Public Works Committee will follow from 10:20 to 10:40. Parks and Conservation will meet from 10:45 to noon. Land use and planning will meet from 1:00 in the afternoon to 2:35. Administration and Finance Committee meets from 2:40, 3:00. And Committee of the Whole will round out the day from 3:00 to 3:35. And all of those meetings are being held right here in City Council Chambers at 140 West Pine.
Thanks. Do the committee chairs have any issues, corrections to that schedule? Okay, then that will happen on Wednesday. Now it's time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. I know a lot of folks are here for public comment on the subdivision, excuse me, the townhouse exemption, and that's not this. That'll be later. So now is the time for public comment on items that are not on the agenda. Come on up to the mic and say your name for the record, and try to keep your comments to three minutes or less. Thanks.
Hi, my name is Jim Conklin from Missoula, and I'm here because my son, for social studies class, had to come to get a civic experiment, civic engagement. And so I've said, since I'm coming, I might as well show him that giving public comment is not a huge deal, et cetera. I received a bear garbage area warning letter from the city back in September, when this was passed seven, eight years ago, totally in support of it. We had a huge amount of bears in our alley and stuff. I'd come home at night and there'd be a black bear walking down the alley. Totally supported it. I followed for the first six months, nobody else did. I said, screw that, I'm not getting up at 7:00 in the morning to bring my garbage cans out. Totally supported, but it all goes to, if you're not gonna enforce it, don't pass a law. I know you've got the RV law tonight. If you're not gonna enforce it, bag it. Figure out an enforcement technique before passing, whether you're talking to strict dog leash ordinance, whether you're talking to recreational home rental situation. I would tell anybody not to go through the hassle of becoming an Airbnb right now. There's no enforcement. Enforce it if you're gonna pass it. That's my first thing. Second thing is, I voted for the school bonds. I own that part of my tax increase. I encourage you all as elected officials, if you come out in support of a city-county bond, don't talk about property taxes saying, oh, that's a voter-approved initiative. You've gotta own your support for a government-passed bond. If you support a Fort Missoula Regional Park, you should not say that's the voters deciding it. You have to own it, just like I have to own the school bond tax increase. I voted for it, and I encourage you all not to try to act like that's a different part of our property taxes. Third, on the Fort Missoula Regional Park, it was called Parks and Trails. Parks and Trails, Parks and Trails, Parks and Trails. It was an open-space bond. The law, I refused to pay the $15,000 to Tom Orr to fight it. It should've been followed, the open-space rules, where the allocation of 38 million for Fort Missoula, 1 million for trails, or 1 million for playgrounds, 3 million, should all been separated out. I encourage you, every time you use the term, please, for my own cynical sake, please refer to the Fort Missoula Regional Bond for everyone as the Parks and Trails. But I don't wanna think of it as a cynical marketing campaign, that you called it Parks and Trails, so people would vote for it, when 38 million of the 42 was going to Fort Missoula. So I'm just requesting everyone refer to that as the Parks and Trails. It is not the Fort Missoula Regional Park Bond. And that's the cynicism that has led us, voters, citizens, we want transparency. That was a Fort Missoula, I know that was a county bond. That was a Fort Missoula Regional Park Bond. Great marketing allowed people not to know what they're voting for. And the last thing is, I disagree with some people's ideas, et cetera, but I support, I still appreciate you guys' service. What you guys do for us, volunteering your time for the low wages you get, I sure appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last thing. On the letter, I gotta get my, the letter reads, Allied Waste will provide a bear-resistant container for a very nominal cost per month. All, the word nominal should never be used in a government letter. $168 a year, $14 a month, all in the eyes of interpretation. I encourage three revisions. One, get rid of the word nominal in your warning letter. Two, get a winter time exclusion from the law, whether it's by weather forecast or December, January, and February, we should not be forced throughout hibernation season to get up at 7:00 to pull our things out. If you truly want the rule to be followed, let us bring our garbage cans out at dark the night before. Yes, it's not perfect, but you'll get 100% more investment in that law if we're allowed to bring our garbage cans out before we go to bed, rather than acting like we're gonna get, I make my son get up and do it before he goes to school. So I have a good labor support to get it out. I encourage you to modify that, get rid of the winter time months of that law, and also allow us to bring it out at dark, even though it's not perfect, but you'll get a lot more compliance if we're allowed to take it out at night before.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Additional public comment on items not on the agenda?
My name's Mike Harrison, I live in the county, so I don't know if I'm allowed to speak here or not, so you'll have to...
Yeah, you're allowed to speak, just keep your comments to three minutes.
I'll do my best.
Thank you.
Uh, one, why does it take till mid-January to the end of January to get a meeting with the mayor, Jim Nugent, and the chief of police? Two, uh, is there any chance of forming a type of a committee between the city and the county that, there's a lot of city laws that don't apply to us that live in the county, but when we come into town from the counties, be it Missoula County, or Monroe, or some of the other surrounding counties, we're roped into these laws, and we don't know a lot of these laws. And I've spent quite a bit of time at City Hall today, and, uh, so that was one of the suggestions that I've come up with, is maybe that we get something, you guys in the county get something to where you publish these new laws and things that, so the county residents can know what's going on. And, uh, the biggest part of it is, is my complaints is bicycles. And one, I'd like to know where the funding comes from for all the bicycle marking lanes. And two, Highway 12 is Fifth and Sixth Street between Higgins and Arthur, so how can the city mark bicycle lanes on a state highway? So, and regarding my question, why does it take almost two months to get a meeting with the mayor, and the city attorney, and the chief of police? I understand the chief's on vacation, but it shouldn't take almost two months to get a meeting with the three of them. So they have my information at the mayor's office, and if, I don't know if you guys got any clout to build a fire under that.
You left your information at the mayor's office?
Yeah.
Okay, they scheduled their own meeting, so I can't really speak to that.
Okay, but being the city council, how do you, I guess, build the fire to get a meeting? Because I know Stepper come up and seen Jim today about some of my questions, and...
Yeah.
Why does it take two months to meet with city officials? That's a little bit...
Did you have any more comments?
Nope.
Okay, thanks. Are there any other public comments on items not on the agenda?
Hi, my name is Abby Lines, and this is Luke, and I'm the program manager for the Neighborhood Ambassadors Program, which is through the ASUM Renters Center. So we just wanted to kind of come and just thank you for your support, and just kinda give you all a quick rundown with kinda what we do, if you're not familiar with our program. We'll let Luke take it from here.
Sure, so, the program was started, I think, by the university to try and increase positivity in the relationships between student renters around the university district and the homeowners living there. So we host a variety of events trying to encourage, like, communication and interaction between them, and we also publish a monthly newsletter talking about these events and other things happening in Missoula community. For example, one of our events last month is we had, actually the beginning of, yeah, last month, we had a composting event for all the pumpkins left over after Halloween. We collected pumpkins in the university district and smashed those, and managed to compound around 150 pounds of pumpkin in a really fun way that got everyone together and smashing things together. We also had a Halloween tabling event to pass out glow sticks to children on Halloween to try and, you know, prevent any car accidents happening and things like that.
Yeah, we also do some conflict resolution stuff, kinda between, yeah, between student renters and homeowners. And, yeah, that's about it. Thank you.
Thanks, Abby and Luke. Could I, could you say your full name again for the record? I don't know if they caught it all for the minutes.
It's Luke Carlson.
And Abby Lines.
Great, thanks, guys, thanks for coming. Any more public comment?
My name is Shelley Mitchell. When I moved here to Montana six years ago, I was horrified the fact that the city and the state of Montana was not accessible to people with disabilities. Huge amount of your stores and businesses in town are not accessible. There's a huge amount of stairs everywhere you go. And today was kinda my last straw when I went into a business that deals with other businesses, and their bathroom is in the basement. The only way to get to that was two flights of stairs. We have the Americans with Disabilities Act, and before that, we had Section 504 of the Rehabilitation Act. It's considered segregation when a person with a disability does not have access to those who are able-bodied. And I know when you talk with businesses, they blame the city, then the city always comes back with, well, we don't have the money. My job used to be, years ago, was advocating for the rights with people with disabilities, and that was not a correct response, because either you fix the issue, find out how much it costs, make people come compliant, or a class-action lawsuit is usually filed, which costs a huge amount of more money, which I'm not here to do, because I don't advocate anymore. But, everyone grows old. Your disabled parking is inadequate throughout the city, and some of you I know take care of elderly parents, and you know how difficult it is to get them in and out of their chairs to go grocery shopping, which we all have a right to do. We have an access, we have a right to access to businesses to spend our money, and we shouldn't have to put ourselves in risk, walking down flights of stairs for a normal bodily function. And I know you can't solve the problem, because you've had 44 years to solve the problem of accessibility, and nothing has really changed in the state of Montana. So, I'm not here for any want to say, oh, we're gonna fix anything, because I know that's not true. But I just wanna let you know that there are people who stay home, who don't go and spend their money, who don't go downtown, who don't have the enjoyment of downtown experience, because it is not accessible. But you do control when businesses come in and they re-modify. And you also have to have the understanding of what grandfathering really means. Just because a building is old does not mean it is grandfathered in. You need to show proof on paper of financial hardship to become accessible. And I'm sure that the city's planning department has all of those on record of every business that is not accessible in the city limits. So, I just needed to gripe about that, because I really did not appreciate walking down two flights of stairs and coming back up two flights of stairs in a building that was not accessible that is open to the public. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell. Any other public comment on items not on the agenda?
My name is Bob Moore. After the other two speakers spoke, I thought I would comment on some of them. The guy who's only waited two months for a meeting with the mayor should be real happy. I asked to meet with the mayor, I don't even remember now, one, two years ago. I'm still waiting. I suspect he doesn't like me, I don't know why I think that, but I suspect he doesn't like me, but he hasn't had to find time in whatever it was, one or two years, to meet with me. And I'm not asking to meet with him now. Property taxes. Engen learns from election. Mayor knows property taxes are now an issue. I think it's great that the mayor now realizes, after the last election, that people are a little bit concerned about property taxes. Here's a report written on October 1st, 2014, that said Missoula had the highest taxes of any of the major cities. I guess the mayor didn't read that, though. Stockman Bank, whatever it was, two, three, four months ago, the cities have taxed, cities made a handout to the Stockman Bank that's got $2.5 billion of a million and a half dollars in round numbers. Paper today, or recently, we're gonna give them another nearly $500,000 for another bank, that's $2 million, to a bank that's got over $300 million of surplus and $2-plus-billion of excess. But, don't get it wrong, though, because they're gonna donate $10,000 to the city for something about a dam, and got a big write-up for it. I'm thinking if you give me a handout of $2 million, I'll donate $40,000, a lot more than the bank did. And all you have to do is just give me the amount. I guess that's all. I really would wish you would look at the MRA, the tens of millions of dollars of taxpayers' money that the MRA, the city council, and the mayor is putting in the pockets of developers and professionals in this town. I've asked three or four times how much money is actually coming back into the general fund, and the mayor has refused to answer it. I think that's a fair amount of knowledge for them to provide to the citizens of where is this money going? I know where it's going.
It's about three and a half minutes.
Thank you, excuse me.
Thanks. Any more public comment on items not on the agenda? Okay, we will move on to our consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda were approved in city council committees by unanimous vote. We save time at council meetings by voting on these items as a package. The city clerk will read the list aloud, so citizens watching on MCAT will know what is on the consent agenda. We'll invite community comment on these items before we vote. Ms. Raybein?
Thanks. Let's see, tonight's consent agenda, it looks like we have 10 items. And the first is always is claims, which are the city's accounts payable. Every week, the city council approves all of the bills to be paid. And this week, there are $745,779.95 for checks that are dated tomorrow, December 5th, 2017. Number two is the first reading and preliminary adoption of an ordinance or a law. It's on ordinance amending Missoula Municipal Code Title 10, Chapter 10.22, Section 10.22.190, entitled Parking for Camping Purposes: Clarifying Requirements for Parking Recreational Vehicles for Camping Purposes on a City Street, and setting a public hearing on that matter for December 18th, 2017. Number three is the adopted resolution of the city council declaring the non-functioning trauma screen at the Garden City Compost as surplus property and authorizing its sale as scrap metal. Number four is to approve an amendment to an existing consultant agreement with Territorial Land Works Incorporated for the Fourth Street and South Higgins Avenue to Orange Street Water Main Replacement Project, to provide additional engineering services, including bidding, construction, administration, and project documentation for a cost not to exceed $29,298, which will bring the total contract to an amount not to exceed $39,927. Number five is to adopt, or excuse me, approve a consultant agreement with WGM Group Incorporated for engineering-related services for the Defoe Street and Warden Avenue to Waverly Street Water Main Replacement Project, for a cost not to exceed $89,888. Number six is to approve a consultant agreement with WGM Group Incorporated for engineering services for the Stoddard Street and Scott Street to Milton Street Water Main Replacement Project, for a cost not to exceed $69,893. Number seven is to approve an agreement with the Lloyd A. Dwight Family Partnership for the construction and engineering costs associated with increasing the diameter of 1,025 lineal feet of water main from 8 inches to 12 inches. And that's located in the Linda Vista 16th Supplement subdivision, for a total cost not to exceed $33,722.48. Number eight is to set a public hearing on December 18th, 2017, on a resolution amending the annual appropriations for the city of Missoula, Montana, as set forth in the fiscal year 2017 budget. Increases the total city budget by $22,292,236, in order to recognize grants that the city received during fiscal year and incorporate ongoing construction projects and bond issues with related debt issuance that were carried forward from fiscal year 2016. Number nine is to set a public hearing on December 18th, 2017, for, on a resolution amending annual appropriations for the city of Missoula as set forth in the fiscal year 2018 budget and capital improvement plan. It increases the total city budgeted revenues by $1,486,827, and expenditures by $1,191,575 for the first quarter of 2018 that were not identified or adopted in the original budget. And finally, number 10 is to approve the 2018 city council meeting schedule and direct the city clerk, that's me, to publish it in Missoulian.
Okay, is there any public comment on any of the items in the consent agenda? Come on up. Could somebody shut the doors to the hall? Thanks.
I didn't know if you were gonna go in order, one, two, three, on that, Marilyn?
No, this, no, this is for any comment on any of the items.
Okay. My name's Kathy Desha, I live on South Hill, and I just wanted to comment quickly on the parking ordinance. So, a couple things, and I couldn't find reference to this, so bear with me, if it's already been covered, just please excuse it. I saw where you were striking, sleeping in a parked vehicle, and I'm wondering if we could keep that in the ordinance and then put "and/or" recreational vehicle? If you remove parked vehicle, then maybe now they'll be sleeping in cars, so maybe you've addressed that in a, in a different ordinance, but it looks like you were amending this one. There's, this is a tough situation, as my mother would say, there for the grace of God go I. But there are resources for people who have found themselves homeless in Missoula. Family Promise provides shelter at many of our local churches. That's one option. You know, if they can run to the library or something, I'm sure they can find out more information about that. But, I kinda wanted to speak on this, because from 2014 to 2016, I traveled to Seattle monthly for business, and I saw the jungle, the tent cities, and the RVs parking on the streets everywhere. And I can tell you that it became an enormous problem for the city of Seattle. We've had various things happen at my parents' house, where some of the transitional people have been sleeping down by the river, and one decided to sleep in my parents' motorhome, and then was stealing from the neighborhood and collecting everything and putting it outside of the motorhome when we found out. Things have disappeared from the property. So I do think that it's good to address some of these things. And, a couple other things on the fine. Was the fine $100 per day, or was it $100 just in one lump sum? Does this include the Missoula cemetery, the streets in the cemetery? Is that included in the ordinance? And does the county have something that mirrors this? Because, as we know, within the city, there are some streets that are city and some are county, so they can be parked on a county street, but be in Missoula city. So I'm just wondering if there's, there's gonna be a mirror ordinance by the county or a law created within the county that replicates this. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Desha, I appreciate your comments. And as a point of clarification, in case other people were gonna comment on this too, tonight, our action is to set the public hearing, it's not to adopt the ordinance, and so we're gonna have a full public hearing on, is it the 18th?
Yes.
And, and I hope we get a lot more comments, too.
Yeah.
And, thanks.
Thanks.
And I'm clarifying it in case other folks wanted to comment, and so they'll know we're just setting the public hearing.
Yeah, and I just wanted to bring those little points up, in case the wording can be addressed on that before the public hearing.
Sure.
Thank you.
Thanks. Is there any other public comment on any of the items on the consent agenda? Mr. Moore?
I was just reading number eight, about a $22 million change to the budget, I guess. I don't understand a word this thing says. It sounds like identified revenues and budget transfers not identified in the original budget. I think you owe, if, if the words say what they mean, or mean what they say, then I think you owe the public an explanation of why $22 million was not identified in the budget last year. I've sat through some of the budgeting process, and I was never so disappointed in and exercised in my life. But I think this should be explained to the public in an article, in the news, Missoulian and so forth, as to what this is. Not only what it is, but why it has happened.
Thank you.
Thanks, and just like the other, the previous item, this is to set a public hearing, and there'll be a staff report and presentation at the public hearing. Okay, any more public comment? I thought you were coming up to make public comment. Looks like you're taking photos. Okay. All right, city council members, do you have any questions or comments on the consent agenda? Ms. Cares, and then Mr. Von Losberg?
I wanted to comment on the same item as Mr. Moore, the number eight budget amendment, and say what you then said, Ms. Marler, about the fact that this will be a public hearing on the 18th, and we'll hear a presentation on it the Wednesday prior, the 13th, so there'll be two opportunities prior to the vote. Obviously, this is a big deal, and that those questions should be answered, and they will be answered. So, thanks for raising those questions, we'll be sure to talk about them at those presentations.
Mr. Von Losberg?
Ms. Cares covered what I was gonna mention about the committee meeting prior to the public hearing. Thanks.
Okay, I think that we're ready for a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong, Armstrong votes yes. Becerra, Becerra votes yes. Bentley, Bentley votes yes. Cares, Cares votes yes. DeBary, DeBary votes...
DeBary votes yes. Hettall votes yes. Hess votes yes. Jones votes yes. Marler votes yes. Von Losberg votes yes. And West votes yes. Would anyone like to change your vote? That's 11 ayes and one absent.
This is the time when we have comments from city staff, agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum, but I'm not aware of any of those tonight. Is there anyone here for any of those categories? Okay. I didn't think so. They're not on the agenda. We have one public hearing tonight. State law and city council rules set guidelines for inviting community comment in a formal way on certain issues. Following a staff report on each item, the city council invites community comment. The city council normally votes on the same night as the public hearing unless one council member requests that it be returned to a city council committee for further consideration. And tonight, we're going to have a public hearing on the Colanditch Grove Street Town Homes and city open space petition. And we have Drew Larson here. Thanks.
Thank you. Yep, Drew Larson with Development Services for the record. And tonight, I am presenting an annexation request, a zoning upon annexation, as well as a conditional use request for a townhome exemption development greater than 10 units. The development is located along Grove Street, just outside the existing city limits. Tonight, you will have to consider two motions. The first is, a motion is annexation of this property into the city of Missoula and zoning upon annexation of RT 5.4 residential on the 31-unit townhome exemption development portion of the parcel, as well as OP 1 open space upon annexation. This motion must be approved for council to vote on the conditional use. If the annexation and zoning upon annexation is not approved, the property will revert back to its status in the county. And tonight, Territorial Land Works is the project representative, and Mr. Paul Forsting is here. And the applicant is the current property owner, Colanditch Properties LLC. And if approved, would be transferred to a developer that would develop the property. So the location of the property being annexed is highlighted here in blue. As you can see, the existing city limits are in the orangish color. It is located along Grove Street at the end of the existing Milwaukee multipurpose trail that goes under Reserve Street there. Here you can see the two portions of the property. The green on the southwest that would contain the, it's the old railroad, Chicago-Milwaukee Railroad grade. That portion is the portion that's proposed to be a city of Missoula open space acquisition, and the portion that would be zoned OP 1 if council decides to adopt the resolution to annex and zone upon annexation. The blue portion here is proposed to be zoned RT 5.4. It contains two detached houses and some accessory structures. The property owners have applied for a boundary line relocation to locate this house onto its own property, and then the remaining of the portion would be the proposed 31-unit townhome exemption development. So here's just a quick, closer, a little bit closer view of the property. The outline blue, again, this portion is going to be the 31-unit townhome exemption development conditional use that I'm going to get into now. So when I went out posting the site to let the public know that there's going to be a conditional use public hearing this evening, I was able to take a few photos to help familiarize ourselves with the site. These two here on the left, the top-left one is looking up the old Chicago-Milwaukee Railroad grade. And the one directly beneath it is a picture just directly behind it, where it shows the end of the existing Milwaukee multipurpose trail. This top-right photo is looking up Grove Street, looking north. As you can see, there's no city sidewalks, any active transportation facilities. It's kind of tough to see in this photo, but there is an irrigation ditch that runs along Grove Street and adjacent to the subject property. So just a few more photos. These two here on the left are taken from the northwest corner. This top-right one is at the end of an existing trail that was part of the Riverside subdivision. It is existing and would be, continue to be used to access the city open space that, if the conditional use is approved tonight, the open space will also move forward. And then this one is at the end of the Milwaukee Railroad grade, looking back towards Missoula. You can see Mount Sentinel there in the background. And then here on the right are taken from the southwest corner. This is on top of an existing county levee. And so a majority of the property is behind. It's a Zone X floodplain. It's not a regulated floodplain because it's protected by a levee. And so you can kind of see it here where the levee is right here, and then it drops down. And so during the conditional use, we actually received comment from the city of Missoula floodplain manager. And she had encouraged that the property developer build all houses two feet above floodplain elevation. But again, it's not a regulated floodplain designation in the city of Missoula. And so staff has recommended a condition of approval that would place a statement within the development covenants that warns future owners about living behind a levee, provides resources to FEMA brochures about living behind a levee, and those types of So the applicable regional plan is the R. Missoula City Growth Policy 2035, which was adopted in November of 2015. It recommends a land use designation of residential median, 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre, shown here in yellow, as well as parks and open lands shown in the top-right corner in that darkish green. The requested RT 5.4 zoning for the land outlined in red on this property on this slide would allow for the development up to eight dwelling units per acre, which actually is in the middle of that 3 to 11 dwelling units recommended by the growth policy. The existing zoning today is CRR 3, which is a county residential zoning district, which permits four dwelling units per acre. The building types are detached house as well as two-unit house. Those are approved as a special exception in that county. But duplexes and single-family are permitted, and it's four dwelling units per acre today. Surrounding-city zoning is RT 10, directly to the north, which is that Riverside Addition subdivision. This is an approved subdivision but has not gone through final plat. Both of those in the RT 10 were approved under previous zoning regulations, Title 19 and old subdivision regulations. It was RL D4, which permitted clustering. You would take the density from the roadways, you'd take density from the open space, and you could have smaller lot sizes within that RT 10. The RT 10 today requires 10,000 square feet per dwelling, as well as a minimum lot size of 10,000 square feet. So if the property north of there and south of there were approved as subdivisions today, they'd have to have a maximum of 10,000 square foot dwellings. So that's it on the zoning. So this is just a quick, simple site plan showing the proposed 31-unit townhome exemption. The townhome park here on the left side, right there, these are all the 31 dwelling units. And the stuff down here is the proposed city open space acquisition. And this is just a concept right now, but it's showing, you know, the Milwaukee Trail continuing through here. Right here, highlighted in red, is that existing trail that I showed in those photos that was part of the Riverside Addition. And that is constructed and would be used to access the townhome park, as well as the larger open space. So yeah, per that townhome standards, that townhome park needs to be 11% of the proposed parcel that's going to be used. And so they have provided just under half an acre of parkland for that. Agency was comment, or agency comment was received from City Parks in support of the open space set aside for the townhome park. Following the November 29 land use and planning meeting, which took place last Wednesday, City Parks staff and the applicant agreed that the townhome park should be dedicated as open space to the city. So staff sent out a memo on Friday, December 1, with an amendment, condition of approval number 10, reflecting the townhome park dedicated to the city as open space. So along with that, staff recommends deleting condition of approval number 11 if the townhome park is dedicated as city open space. In addition, Parks commented that a landscaping and maintenance plan is required for the boulevard areas. So staff has recommended another condition of approval requiring a landscape and maintenance plan for the boulevards through Hamilton Way. And so Hamilton Way will connect through to Grove Street. There are seven-foot boulevards, five-foot sidewalks. And so Parks would like to review and approve a boulevard landscaping and maintenance So here's the proposed site plan showing required setbacks that it, well, it meets the required setbacks of Title 20. And as you can see, the developer has proposed to extend Hamilton Way through the subject property, connecting the development to existing city infrastructure Grove Street and the existing Hamilton Way within the Riverside Addition. City Engineering provided comment during agency review period, and conditions of approvals number four through eight are regarding the construction, construction on-street parking and private road maintenance. The condition number four requires half-street improvements on Grove Street, including a five-foot wide curbside sidewalk. The standards call for boulevard sidewalks, but because of the irrigation ditch that I mentioned earlier in that photo, the city of Missoula Development Services Director can approve a deviation. And as I understand it, the ditch company wouldn't let them sleeve the ditch or relocate the ditch. And so we've approved a deviation to curbside sidewalks. And so this site plan is showing boulevards, but we've allowed curbside sidewalks in this location. So yeah, full half-street improvements, curb gutter sidewalk.
Do you want the sidewalk standing?
So...
Point of order, there's, don't disrupt. Everyone will have a chance for questions and comments later.
So condition number five requires Hamilton Way to be constructed in a 28-foot-wide back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb paving, which would permit parking on one side of the street. They also have to do, as mentioned earlier, seven-foot boulevards and five-foot-wide boulevard And this was required as a minimum within a 54-foot-wide public access easement and private road. But following the November 29 land use and planning meeting, staff received additional comment from Engineering Division that they would accept this portion of Hamilton Way as right-of-way within the TED development, the townhome exemption development, with additional sidewalk and easement. And so what the new condition is that the public right-of-way would include the 28-foot-wide back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb paving, curb gutter, and then the seven-foot boulevards. The reason why we didn't include the sidewalks in this one, and that we were going to require a six-foot-wide sidewalk easement, is that because if they were to dedicate a full 60-foot-wide right-of-way, all of the setbacks and all of the planning that had gone into this project would, I mean, the setbacks are measured from property line or nearest circulation system. And in this case, setbacks were measured from the sidewalk from day one of planning this project. And so the condition is boulevard, or the roadway, boulevards within a right-of-way, and then the sidewalks on their own sidewalk easement with an additional foot of maintenance. So the condition of approval number six requires Coley Lane, which is the short private road here, to be constructed to a 21-foot-wide back-of-curb-to-back-of-curb with a five-foot curbside sidewalk on the south end, connecting to the larger sidewalk network in the small area. The 21-foot-wide would not permit parking within that private roadway. And again, that condition requires that private road to be within a public access And then condition number seven along these restricts parking to one side on Hamilton Way, as I noted, as well as both sides on Coley Lane. So again, being a private road within a public access easement for Coley Lane, condition number eight requires a statement within the development covenants stating that the construction, maintenance, and maintenance is an obligation of the owner or the property owners association. So staff has recommended condition number eight with a statement within those development covenants to warn future residents. Lastly, City Fire commented that the proposed project must adequately be served by fire services. So condition of approval number 12 requires a developer to submit a fire hydrant plan prior to zoning compliance permit or approval. So here's just a few images of, and renderings of kind of the proposed projects that they're going to be going through. There are floor plans, as well as some more site plans included in the application, which I have not included in the presentation today. So here's just a proposed rendering of the whole project, showing the Riverside subdivision to the north, the river and open city open space to the rear. This is Klaus Property, the Poplar Farm associated with the wastewater service plant is just right here. And this is the old Milwaukee Railroad grade here, and proposed 31-unit townhome development. So this TED proposal was reviewed in order to ensure it complies with the standards specific to townhome exemption developments, as outlined in Title 20. So now I'm going to address the review criteria which apply to this project. There are others, such as slope or riparian area calculations, that we won't cover as they are not relevant to this project. The criteria that do apply are listed here, and that is one, density. So given the size of the parcel, the requested zoning would allow the applicant to build up to 33 dwelling units on the property. According to the RT 5.4 zoning district, yeah, that would be that 33 dwelling units. However, as discussed, they are instead proposing to build 31 dwelling units, which is approximately 7.84 dwelling units per acre. The 31 dwelling units meets the standards for density that is part of this TED review. Two is the setbacks in the Teds must meet the standards underlying the zoning district. The RT 5.4 residential, those are 20 feet for front and rear, seven and a half feet or one-third the building height for side setbacks, whichever is greater. And 10-foot for street-side yard setbacks. Those would be at the corners of Hamilton Way and Grove Street. Coley Lane and Hamilton Way would be 10-foot there. So each of these units is, in this development, meets those setbacks. They did provide site plans within it, but it was slightly confusing to throw up on a screen. But you could see that in the application packet, that they have met those setbacks. Three is that must meet the infrastructure of Title 12. Engineering has reviewed this project according to those regulations and finds that it meets the standards for access, roads, sidewalks. And so conditions number four through eight, again, ensure that the project meets those Title 12 standards. Block length, blocks can be no longer than 480 feet without a pedestrian access break. And I forgot to point it out earlier, but there is a mid-block crossing, and they are planning to do clustered mailboxes at one of those locations. And so that mid-block crossing would lead directly to the clustered mailboxes. And then the open space requirement of 11% for the townhome exemption development standards is met by that townhome park. So for the conditional use review criteria, this project complies with all the applicable standards of Title 20. The residential nature of this project is similar in character to other developments that occurred and are occurring around it. The site and building design are also comparable to other residential development in the area. The residential nature of the project has similar operating characteristics to other development in the area. Engineering has recognized that there will be an increase to traffic as a result of this project, and believes that the surrounding infrastructure is adequate to handle the anticipated increase. In response to the questions from council at the November 29 land use and planning meeting, staff provided information regarding parking for the TED in the memo that was released on December 1. And so parking would be allowed on the north side of Hamilton Way, and there will be nine parking spaces on-street available. In addition, there will be approximately 102 parking spaces within the garage and driveways of the TED development. So this is just a quick, kind of roughly thrown-together thing I did on Friday for the parking. The blue square shows the off-street parking for all of the projects. So a majority of these have eight off, or four off-street parking spaces per, some are, you know, limited to three or even two, which you'll see here in a second. And so this was the majority of off-street parking that would be permitted on Hamilton Way, and that's five there. And then this is the east side of the development, again, four on-street parking spaces, and the blue represent the number of off-street, for a total of 100. the blue represent the number of off-street, for a total of a hundred-and-two off-street parking spaces for thirty-one dwelling units. So, just in the next few slides, I'll cover the conditions of approval as amended to reflect the townhome park, dedicated as city open space, and the Hamilton Way dedicated as right-of-way. One is that if the annexation and zoning upon annexation failed, then the conditional use will not move forward tonight. That the approved site plans must meet all applicable portions of Title Twenty and must substantially conform as approved tonight. Comment was received from the Missoula Air Quality citing the Missoula is susceptible to radon, bad air quality regarding wood-burning stoves, and that energy-efficient homes lead to, or that energy-efficient homes lead to improved air quality. So, condition number three requires statements regarding all three of these be stated within the development covenants for the project. That would be prohibiting wood-burning stoves, except for the pellet stoves that they approved today. Radon, it's just mentioning that we do, Missoula has radon issues that if we've all bought houses, we usually have to do a radon test. And that they're just encouraging energy-efficient homes to improve Missoula's air quality. And number four addresses the half-street road improvements on Grove Street that I mentioned before. So, as noted earlier, staff has provided an amendment to condition of approval number five regarding to Hamilton Way. Here is the condition with underline and strike-through to show the proposed amendment. The first amendment is that Hamilton Way will be dedicated within that forty-two-foot-wide right-of-way to provide the paving, curb and gutter, and seven-foot-wide landscape boulevard, drainage facilities, ADA facilities. And the second amendment is to provide a six-foot-wide sidewalk easement on both sides of the road in order to accommodate five-foot boulevard sidewalks and one foot of maintenance. Conditions number six and seven in the staff report, which are street improvements to Coley Lane, which is a private road within a private, within a public access easement. And number seven restricts parking on both sides of Coley Lane and on the south side of Hamilton Way. Condition of approval number eight is amended to delete Hamilton Way from the private road maintenance statement within the development covenants. Condition of approval number nine requires a boulevard landscaping and maintenance plan prior to zoning compliance approval for the boulevards located in Hamilton Way. So, condition of approval number ten is also amended to reflect the dedication of the townhome park as city of open space. In addition to the dedication, staff has included a statement to protect the open-space area during construction disturbance. And so, the majority of it was that the park would be dedicated as public or City of Missoula open space that would blend with the larger open-space acquisition planned after the annexation and zoning upon annexation. And the next, and the last statement is just to ensure that, if that, to ensure that the quality and the open-space character of that townhome park is protected, as well as the larger town, or open space. So, I believe I mentioned this earlier, I can't remember if I did, but staff has recommended striking condition of approval number eleven if the townhome park is dedicated. The condition of approval number eleven was regarding public access over the townhome park to ensure the connectivity through the multipurpose trail system that would be proposed in the open space. So, conditions of approval number twelve through fourteen are as shown in the staff report regarding the fire hydrant, revegetation and weed management plan, and the covenants regarding living behind a levee. Lastly, condition number fifteen states that the amendments to the development covenants may not be amended or deleted without prior written approval of governing body approval as further amended to delete reference to the townhome park landscaping and maintenance plan. So, again, as I mentioned right at the beginning, that there are two motions to consider tonight. And the first motion is in regards to the annexation and zoning upon annexation, which must happen first before council can take action on the proposed thirty-one-unit townhome exemption development. This motion is to adopt a resolution to annex and zone the northeast portion of the parcel, RT 5.4 residential, and the southwestern portion of the parcel, OP-1 city open space. Staff did receive a formal protest, and I believe a number of the residents saw a different map, but it was a little bit larger. But my understanding is that they were protesting the RT 5.4. And so, this map is showing a hundred-and-fifty-foot-wide buffer around the portion of the parcel that's zoned, that's proposed to be zoned, RT 5.4. And so, there was eleven properties that I, that were verified as protest of twenty-six, which is over the twenty-five percent threshold to officially protest the zoning, which means that if council proceeds with it, the zoning upon annexation, it must be approved by two-thirds of those present and voting members of city council tonight. There were four other protests that we did, or that we did receive, but because of the boundary and the RT 5.4, they weren't included in the official protest. And so, lastly is the recommendation on the conditional use, and staff recommends approval of the townhome exemption development. Conditional use, based on the findings of fact in the staff report, has amended per the memo, or has amended per the memo and presented today the conditions of approval. Thank you, and I'm here if you have any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Ms. West, is your comment procedural, because we haven't gotten to questions and stuff yet? Okay. You don't want to be out of order. I will use my gavel. Okay, does the applicant or their representative want to say anything at this time?
Yeah, yes. Paul Forsting, Territorial Landryx, hello, members of the council. I'm here on behalf of the Cullen Ditch family, who's the applicant here in this case for this project. They're very excited about this property and this development. They've owned this property for quite a while, about a hundred years, to my understanding. And to come together on the, on the project, to have a development that has over six-and-a-half acres of park, and then to find a way to efficiently place thirty-one houses is, you know, was a very exciting option for them. We looked at putting houses across the whole property, but when we realized that the parks had a, had a great interest in acquiring a piece of land, we focused in on connecting the existing infrastructure and adding the houses to that location. The whole property is over ten-and-a-half acres here. It currently has two properties, or two houses on it. One of those houses will be removed, and then we'll be putting thirty-one new units there, and so, thirty additional houses there. If you look at the overall project density, we're talking about three houses per acre. But because we've broken off a check, a section for, specific to parks, the townhouse development's on four-point-two acres. And then, of that, about a half an acre is the dedicated eleven percent park. And so, combine those two, the two areas of park equals six-point-nine, or over six-and-a-half acres, and I think like six-point-six acres, dedicated to a park that'll permanently be parked. And so, for the Cullen Ditches to come together to be able to find, to be able to find the use of their property that will ultimately keep it in a majority of public park, that the folks here will be able to enjoy themselves, will be able to walk the property for the rest of their lives, it was very attractive. They also like the idea that we're going to be able to add thirty-one houses here. These will all be owner-occupied, or at least the ability for owners to buy each one of these. These aren't, you know, all on one parcel, so to speak, and somebody's going to rent them all there. These will all be opportunities for individual homeownership. And we know how important that is in the City of Missoula right now. These houses, well, you know, it's hard to sugarcoat anything. New construction at this level, these houses, these townhouse units probably be about three-hundred-thousand dollars. And that's, that's the cost of putting all the infrastructure together. There are some savings when you do a two-unit house, and so, hopefully, we can, we can even have it at a more affordable, like if you can call it affordable, price range. There's a two-unit townhouse across the street on Grove, and I think they're asking three-ten for each of those units. It's, you know, the market's, it's very, I guess it's, you know, I pay attention, pay attention with the organization of realers, and it's, the market keeps going up. We simply don't have thousands of houses coming online. We have thousands of houses planted in total throughout the whole county, but, you know, these twenty, thirty houses do help, and they do provide some houses for our community. This is a good location. We're on water and sewer here. We've got, we're at the very end of the Milwaukee Trail, but the folks who live here will be able to hop on that trail and find it relatively convenient to get to places like downtown. They're lucky to have an underpass under Reserve here, and they'll, you know, crossing Russell's a little cumbersome. But really, if you look at, you know, how you get from this property to downtown on a bike, it's relatively, relatively efficient. People, I assume, will use that as an option for transport. The bus comes out on Grove Street, and that also provides another opportunity for that. I do want to be available to answer any comments or to talk about the project. Drew did a great job of showing some slides. We've got preliminary renderings of the buildings here. You know, there'll be, there'll be more color, you know, there'll be, there'll be really nice units when they're done. I'm confident of it, and, you know, there's, it's, you know, it's difficult when you put houses in a neighborhood where there's not houses. It's very difficult. I completely understand. You know, there's, there's not a housing project we come to where the people aren't, aren't upset about it. And I can't say that I wouldn't be upset about it either, if I lived in a house and there was more houses next to it. I don't know, as a community, how, you know, what we're going to do long-term about housing. It's really going to be difficult. We're talking about thirty houses here. We've got a, you know, it's my understanding, a thousand people are increasing in Missoula every year, and so, you know, this is just a small, small part of that. It took three years to get to this point. We feel really strongly that we have a great project. You know, we have six-and-a-half acres of park. I don't know if you're going to see many projects coming forward where you're going to get that key, those key park areas. You know, I think this park will be on par with something like the Tower Street entry to the, to the river, and just a wonderful spot. So, I'm really passionate about it. I think it's a great project, and I hope that you all support it. So, thank you very much.
Okay, so, I'm going to open the public hearing now, and just some reminders of our rules, because I think some people haven't been to one of our public hearings before. Just remember to say your name for the record. Keep your comments to three minutes or less. I'll let you know if you're going over three minutes by much, usually around three-and-a-half-ish I start saying something. Please direct your comments to me as the chairperson of this meeting. Don't address each other or staff, et cetera, just direct your comments to the chair. If you have questions, you can ask them, but they probably won't get answered until later when we get to the question and answer portion, just how we do it, comments and then questions. And just a friendly reminder that we don't do any applause or any heckling in city council chambers. So, those are our rules. And if you want to come up to speak, but you don't like public speaking, you can just say, "I agree with so-and-so." You don't have to stand and make a three-minute speech if that's not your jam. So, okay. With that, I'll open the public hearing, and who would like to go first? Come on up.
Hi, my name is Morgan Hirschenberger, and we held a public meeting last night with a bunch of the neighbors in the neighborhood in regards to the zoning change request. First, I'd like to address one thing that Paul said, and that is that it's hard to have change happen in the neighborhood and housing developments. Nobody that I talked to in our community is against having a housing development. What we're against is the proposed density and the proposed traffic at eight houses per acre. The whole area is all four houses, one to four houses per acre, or, excuse me, the vast majority of the area. Grove Street is the only street that serves our area. Any house that's accessed by Grove Street, the only access to the house is Grove Street. And I think that that's material before we get started. So, I have some prepared remarks here that, that we, that we agreed upon as a community. Due to the three-minute rule, I'm not going to be able to get through these. And what's still, what we decided is, I'm going to read through as far as I can get, and then somebody else from my community is going to pick up where I left off. But can everybody who's part here to protest the Cullen Ditch place raise your hand right now? So, you can see, we've got a substantial neighborhood agreement that we're, we've got some concerns here. So, to get started, we believe that the zoning request should be denied. The zoning request itself, irregardless of the conditional use, the zoning request itself does not meet the primary standards that it's required to meet. Number one requirement is public hearing notification to adjacent property owners. And number two is the minimum review criteria as outlined in Montana Code Annotated seventy-six-dash-two-dash-three-oh-four, as referenced in the city's website. So, to first address the failure to provide public notice of the public hearing, the requirements as outlined in statute, quote, "Mail notice of public hearings on zoning amendments must be mailed first class to the subject property owner and physical address, as well as owners' and physical addresses of properties within a hundred-and-fifty feet of subject parcel at least fifteen days before the scheduled hearing." The claim in public record is that certified mail was sent to all property owners within one-hundred-and-fifty feet. That did not happen. There were no certified mails sent. They, or, maybe that's a strong statement. To our knowledge of everybody that attended our community meeting, none of us that received the mailing received it certified mail, so that statement is inaccurate. The reality is, is that the property owners who did receive the notice did not receive it certified mail. Several of the property owners did not receive their notice until after the public comment period had closed. That's why you only have two public comments, is because the public comment period had closed when people received their notification of public comment. And number three, some property owners never received the notification in the first place. The map of public comment requirements that was shown by the city just now is materially different than the map that we were provided, and does not show accurately some of the property ownership boundaries. And we believe that if provided proper opportunity and time, we can prove these claims. Despite the lack of the timely notification, we were still able to organize with very limited time as a community to be able to achieve the protest, the protest petition requirements. So, that's, the failure to notify is a very big deal. We didn't get a chance as a community to even respond to this, even though it says in public record that we were notified. So, that, I think, is very important there. And then, number two, the failure to meet the minimum review criteria as outlined in Montana Code Annotated. The proposed zoning would change the, the proposed zoning would allow for eight dwelling units an acre. Right now, the property is zoned to four dwelling units an acre. So, that's a fact. So, number one out of the MCA seventy-six-two-dash-three-oh-four, zoning regulations must be made in accordance with a growth policy. So, the proposed zoning RT 5.4 is not in accordance with the comprehensive growth plan provided in the executive summary, page seven, items twelve and thirteen. Item twelve, the regional plan recommends medium density with three to eleven dwelling units per acre. It does meet that. But the vicinity plan recommends four dwelling units per acre, and if they go to five-point-four, that would exceed the four dwelling units per acre outlined in the vicinity plan.
Okay, Mr. Hirschenberger, you're a little over four minutes.
All right. Thank you for your time. We'll let somebody else from the community pick up where I left off.
My name is Jerry Hunt, and I live within a hundred-and-fifty feet of this proposal. And I'm just going to continue on where Morgan left off from. Zoning regulations must be designed to promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare, and facilitate the adequate provision of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks, and other public requirements. The proposed zoning would have harmful effects on public safety and general welfare. The increased motor vehicle traffic would create a hazard to public safety due to the following: substantial increase in traffic, sixty-two more cars expected from site plan, and eight to ten vehicle trips per day per dwelling; no continuous sidewalks on Grove Street. Apparently, that's changed, because we weren't aware of any sidewalks before. This neighborhood is a school bus route serving many elementary-age children. The increased traffic created by the proposed zoning may create hazard situations for the neighborhood children. The Milwaukee bike path actually ends right there where the property, where the property is. Increased pedestrian traffic from proposed walking bike path. There appears to be no allocation of off-street parking to accommodate the traffic associated with the proposed new city trail and park. Creating park and trail system without any park is an obvious and serious safety hazard. The city engineer indicated that Grove Street was adequate to handle additional traffic. We believe that the engineer failed to consider substantial true traffic Grove experiences from people circulating the stoplight on Reserve and Third Street. In the adoption of zoning regulations, the governing body shall consider reasonable provisions of adequate light and air. The proposed house houses create a virtual wall nearly twenty-five feet high, setback only twenty feet to the majority of the north adjacent properties. This will substantially limit the light and views from the properties on the south perimeter of the street side development. The effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems. The proposed townhouses would substantially increase both motorized and non-motorized transportation. The creation of a new bike path in city park will increase- The creation of a new bike path in city park will increase all forms of traffic. Grove Street is a single access, access point to all homes in the community. Grove Street is already in poor repair. The additional traffic will create conditions which will be harmful to the community and potentially dangerous. The increased traffic will have negative impacts at the already dangerous intersection of Third and Grove Street. I'm probably close to three minutes, aren't I? Okay.
You're, you can hand off now or, okay. I applaud you guys on your organizational skills. This is impressive.
My name is Thomas Orr. I live at 2619 Roderick Way. I was one of the houses that was marked blank because there was no protest. Reason I did not protest is because I never received the notice. The proposed zoning would have a substantially negative impact on traffic in the local area with no plans for mitigation. The promotion of compatible urban growth, this is up for interpretation, but is there a definition of precedent to look at? The character of the district and its peculiar suitability for, for particular uses. Grove Street is a residential with some light agricultural uses. The land in question of development has been used in the past as light agricultural. It's been a horse pasture and non-irrigated hay crop. The proposed zoning would not be in character with the surrounding area and would not observe its peculiar suitability for light agricultural use. Surrounding, the surrounding area is primarily made up of single-family homes on single lots with light agricultural use in the back. The proposed zoning would create an island of high-density structures, eight dwellings per unit, inconsistent with the, the character of the neighborhood, which is approximately one to five dwellings per acre. Proposed zoning would not allow for light, for the light agriculture use characteristic of the neighborhood. The height and size of the structures proposed would be particularly uncharacteristic of the surrounding properties. Conserve the value of buildings and encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. The requested zoning will inevitably reduce property values of all adjacent homeowners. Given the adjacent, or given adequate time, we are confident that we could provide definitive proof of this statement. I can say that I moved into this street on Roderick because it is a very pleasant neighborhood of, with different architectural styles. None of the houses resemble what they're proposing, which I find to be, look like sterile boxes and, that are jammed together. The requested zoning will inevitably reduce those property values of all adjacent homeowners. The current zoning allows for four units per acre is the most efficient and appropriate use of the land. The current zoning fits well with the adjacent developments and structures, providing the opportunity for comparably affordable residences. The proposed, the proposal would be an undue burden to the current properties, particularly the properties directly to the north of the Streamside development. And to approve this zoning request would be to ignore the rights and desires of adjacent property owners for the desire of a single owner's request. Can you tell me where I'm at?
You have another minute.
Zoning regulations must be designed to promote public health, public safety and the general welfare and facilitate the adequate provision of, of transportation, water, sewage, schools, parks and other requirements. We believe the city council should deny the zoning request as it fails to meet the basic procedural and review standards. If not outright denied, request that the city delay vote on this measure until proper notification is provided to all property owners within 150 feet to ensure that all interested parties have the opportunity to provide public comment that can be recorded.
Okay, thank you. Is there any additional public comment on this item? Oh, just come on up to the mic. You have, you have to come to the mic and say your name.
Hi, I'm Bob Harkin. I'm just asking if the graphic be changed to where it reflects the, the zoning as it currently stands.
I think we can do that. Did you want to make a comment?
I do.
All right. Or were you just curious about the zoning?
Oh, no. I'm here.
Go ahead and I'm starting the timer.
So first of all, we can, my name is Bob Harkin and I live at 2710 Roderick. I'm one of those that has not received notice. There's a comment in some of the staff report that notice was mailed to my former address in Florence. I don't know, I got forwarded mail today. I got my tax notice, I get my water bill. I don't know. You can see that that proposed area is surrounded by RT 10. I'd like to put a little personality. There are lines drawn on the, the graphic up there. I'd like to put a little personality to that if I may. I'd like to go back, I need to, let's go to the desktop.
Thank you very much, Mr. Larson.
Didn't know you had to do this too, did you? Yeah. Yeah, that one. No, but, up and down. Okay, good. All right. Thank you. Here's what the, we've seen these pictures before, but here they are, ones and twosies. Proposed townhomes. Sterile, yes, yes. Boring. Now, here's the traffic plan. For some reason or other, you'll see that where the little arrow is in the red up there, I don't know, you think it doesn't exist, but that's a road that goes north and, and comes into Grove Street. So there's going to be a lot of traffic coming River Road, Grove and right down Hamilton. Guilty as charged, I do it all the time because you avoid coming up the back way on the light. There's no reason they shouldn't be doing it. I mean, whoever comes in is going to be smart enough. Our point being, of course, high traffic volume too there. That little area where the arrow is, two cars can pass, but it's tight. And here's how it looks. This is off of Google, somehow got omitted from all the plans. The, for some reason, they're chopped off the little roundabout right there at the bottom left so that you didn't see that the road actually goes up and that's where the traffic will come right into the townhome development if approved. Once again, we're posing the zoning, not the factors of development. In fact, nice homes down there would be, would be just fine to make with all of us. Here's some typical homes in Streamside. Was referred to as Riverside, but that's, it's a type home. It's, it's called Streamside. Very standard home in the area. I didn't pick the worst, the best, just right down the block. Last night's snow on the ground there, thank you. This is looking north on Hamilton Way, just past the roundabout. This is where they'll come in. It's a very narrow road there.
Mr. Harkin, you're a little over three, if you could wrap up.
Okay, I'll wrap it up. Looking south into the development, these are homes down on Quinn Court and Everett. Again, small, modest home, very nice homes down there. Thank you for your time. And once again, we're not opposed to development, but like Morgan had mentioned, we're after safe, logical development for our area. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harkin. Next public comment.
Hi, I'm Kevin Larson. I don't know if any people were here about eight years ago when they put Hamilton Way through. It used to be a cul-de-sac coming off of Grove Street, turned into a cul-de-sac. There was seven houses. So when I bought, I was told that it was a cul-de-sac. Then you people made us put a road through. So we came with a compromise because we were told it's cul-de-sac, you said there was going to be a road for emergency people. And we came up with a compromise that that's why they have that real skinny part on Hamilton Way that's only like 16 feet with no parking because they said, oh, there wouldn't be any traffic coming through here. It's just mainly for emergency people. And that was with the understanding that the new housing that would go in Roderick Way and the next subdivision would be as planned at the time, four per acre. And now you're going to like triple it and still got that little narrow spot that you guys agreed upon that it would be there because we're only going to have four per acre over there. And now you're trying to renege on your plan. And I don't think that's fair. Feel like I've been sold up pig in a pokey or something. And secondly, I don't know if any of you have been on Grove Street like three o'clock in the afternoon or later. You can't get on Third Street and you can't get on, on Reserve Street. Backs up forever. And you put 100 more cars on there, it's just going to be worse. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
For the record, my name's Laura Myers and I'm also a resident on Grove Street and I'm very excited that so many of my neighbors that I don't know, some of them I do know, came together in such short notice. I literally just saw the sign posted that's like this big on the fence a couple of days ago. So there was not much public notice for the people that live there. And I know a big concern is definitely the traffic, but as a parent, I'm concerned about if there's going to be that many more people. They're probably slated to go to Hawthorne, which is already way above capacity for children. And I know that a bunch of developments just went in down Third Street. And so I'm wondering where, where are these kids going to go to school? Because I know that Hawthorne can't accommodate them. And I mean, they're going, it's just a concern that I have for that area as well as the traffic. And also, the park seems like a nice idea, but how are people going to access that if there's only five off-street parkings and it's supposed to be a park, open space for the city? But how are people going to access that? And it's just a really small portion at the very end of the development. That just seems, I don't know, like they're trying to make it appealing to people that they're going to be giving us open space, but a half an acre as a park dedicated to the city just seems really small to me with that many people coming. So those are just my concerns that I have as a homeowner on Grove Street.
Thank you, Ms. Myers. Don't be shy, you guys. Come on up.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Harkin and I live within 150 feet of this property that's being proposed as well. I'd just like to review criteria for conditional uses per Missoula zoning code, section 20.85.070H. Conditional use applications may be approved by the city council only when they determine that the review criteria listed below, as applicable, have been satisfied. All of the applicable review criteria must be addressed in the city council's findings of fact in support of their decision. This community that is proposed is compatible with, is not compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale and project design as was shown with our PowerPoint presentation. Other factors to be considered per Missoula zoning code, section 20.85.0701 are, in determining whether all applicable review criteria has been satisfied, the city council may specifically consider the following factors. And the one that we want to bring up is design, that building structures and uses are compatible with adjacent properties and uses in terms of physical design elements such as volume and mass, management, building materials, color, open space design, screening, any applicable use, specific standards and any other design elements considered important by the city council. And from my own personal opinion, this is our neighborhood and we are asking that you give us the chance to present our comments because this is not compatible with the neighborhood that we live in and we did not have proper notice and we request that you delay approval of this zoning so that we have a chance to present and it become a fair process. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harkin. Okay, raise your hand if you're still planning to talk. No pressure. Come on up.
My name is Rihanna Hirschenberger. I live at 405 North Grove Street. I live in the home closest to the development's proposed entry point on Grove Street. I'd rather not be up here tonight, but as a parent, I feel I must speak for the safety of my son with all this increased traffic. I was shocked and angered when I saw the developer's original plans had no sidewalk on Grove Street, so I'm grateful to all involved for requiring one. However, a few hundred feet of sidewalk is not enough to protect pedestrians from the significant new traffic on a street that is regularly used as a high-speed reserve street alternative. Considering the impacts from reserve, which I detailed in my public comment letter and I won't repeat them here, I think Grove Street needs speed bumps or another traffic calming device. I believe the conclusions of law and traffic safety in your staff report are incorrect and that we deserve a thorough traffic and safety study. I would also like to speak to the development's incompatibility with the surrounding area. The conclusions of law in your staff report claim the development would be compatible in terms of design and scale, but I think as we have proven tonight, simply is not true. It just isn't possible for a development with most structures ranging from about 3,500 to 3,700 feet to be compatible with adjacent homes that are only about 1,600 square feet to the low and mid 2000s. The massive scale and quantity of these structures cannot possibly preserve the sun, light and views of the properties to, to the north, factors which you are supposed to consider. My property, for example, would be bordered by three of the two-unit structures and part of a fourth. Buildings one and two are designed to be about 3,500 square feet and buildings three and four about 3,700 square feet. And unfortunately, our home was not even shown on the plot, the bird's eye view that you all saw tonight. It's just shown as a, conveniently shown as a, just a parcel of trees. When my husband and I bought our house 12 years ago, this field was owned for four houses an acre. We never considered nearly eight could be allowed and especially did not expect to be bordered by four of these enormous, ugly structures. The city park and trail would be a great addition to the community, but please don't justify rushed, bad development. I think we've shown tonight that this project demands more planning to preserve the safety and character of our neighborhood. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Hirschenberger.
Hello. I'm Erica Bruner. I live right next to the proposed development at 2714 Hamilton Way. One thing that I think that is important to bring to your attention is owning a home is the biggest investment that most people make in their lives. It's an investment that you make to stand for a while and hopefully come out on the other end making something, either turning that into a new home or passing it on to your children. My biggest concern in hearing about this proposal and then seeing what they were going to be doing and how they were going to be shoved in, you know, with a small, little area of proposed park area that no one will really be able to ever even use, was we did everything we could to be able to afford a home. We built a parade home. There's several that were parade homes in many years, there's four or five in that area. We have great pride in our neighborhood. And knowing that I would be refinancing and, and thinking, I don't know if I would be able to be appraised for what I need to refinance this home for, as soon as someone knows the development's coming in and they know what's going in there, my property values dropped tremendously. And I think all of us is, if, if anyone owns a home here, that's a huge concern. When you decide where to live, just, it's not about not accepting a development in that area, far be it, or affordable homes. This is, we're talking about building homes that fit in the nature of what's already there. And the two neighborhoods that are right on the side of this proposed division, which are single-family homes that are artfully crafted, all different types of, it goes from 250, I think, all the way up to 700,000. It's not about shoving in a bunch of homes so people can live in, in, in Missoula. We're all for that. It's, it's the problems that we're having with the type of homes and the congestion of the traffic. Those are my main issues, so that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Norman White, 2624 Hamilton Way, Missoula. I think the evidence is in and I respectfully request that you acknowledge the citizens of Missoula as opposed to the developer and I respectfully request that you deny the rezoning. Don't delay it. I think it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment?
I'm Jim Betty. I live at 2627.
I live at 2627 Roderick, so within the 150 feet. And it's very interesting for me to participate on this side of this issue, because I just three years ago stood in front of you, desiring and proposing a zoning change on 39th and Russell. And the homeowners on 39th said, and a large majority of those homeowners said they did not want to change the character of 39th, and so I did not get the zoning change. And I respected your evaluation of that, and taking the temperature and the feelings of the homeowners into consideration. And the development that we did on that corner, I think, was very much in keeping with the character of 39th. And what I've heard from my fellow homeowners here is, this is the big issue. Single-family homes in this development with the existing zoning is very compatible with what we have there. And I just really encourage you to take into consideration that most adjacent homeowners do not want this townhouse and density that you are considering now. Thank you.
Can I add one thing?
Oh, actually, we just go around once, once per person. All right. All right. Come on up. You guys, if you wanna, if you're still planning to talk, go ahead. You can, you can line up in the aisles if you like. Thank you, Mr. Larson, for helping with visuals.
Yeah. Just the up and down arrows. Get to them. Yeah, we'll just. Thank you. Drew, appreciate it.
My name is Dylan McFarland. I live at 2705 Roderick Way, which here would be two houses to the north, I guess, of where Hamilton Way is, right on the corner there. The cul-de-sac, I'm attorney here in town, I don't do zoning law. More of a personal injury-type person, so I look at safety issues. One of the things that I look at when I see this development, and to be fair to everyone, and this echoes what we said already, is we understood there'd be a development next to us at some point in time. And no one here has an issue with development and housing in Missoula. What we do have an issue with is the type of housing that's proposed, and the type of zoning, the 5.4, which goes from the R-10, which is, again, four to five houses per acre, to a situation where you're fitting in this multi-family units, which is something that none of us contemplated when we purchased our land and built houses on our land. There was mention that there was one other townhome built in this area, it's on the other side of Grove Street, and that is correct. That townhome was finished in the spring. I know because I was part of litigation with easements that had to do with that townhome. As I understand it, one of those is sold, the other one's not been sold in the eight months it sat there. And there's a reason for that. It doesn't fit the area. It's something different than, again, whatever all of us have become accustomed to in the Orchard Home area, Target Range area. That area of Missoula is unique and distinct, and it's a reason that we built our houses where we did. As a parent, I do have two four-and-a-half-year-old twins, and I want to get down to the, this is Hamilton Way. We're talking about another 105 vehicles, 109 vehicles. I live on the north part of this. In our section, in our area, there's approximately three or four parking spots, which would be on the north side here, that would be available in our area of town. When we look at this proposed trail, the existing trail, there's frankly just not parking for any individuals to go use that area. This is the first time I've seen this plan. I don't understand, and I'm sure there'll be an answer, question-answer period, how anyone from the city of Missoula is supposed to access that property back there, or the proposed park area. It doesn't do us any benefit as a community. So while I do appreciate, on the one hand, the city and the planners, their appreciation for open space, the actual usable open space is nonexistent, and we here in Missoula know what happens with, open space is inaccessible, it turns into a place where our transient community tends to populate. And it's already somewhat of an issue in our area, and no one's commented on that. Everyone has a right to live, I don't have an issue with that, but again, as a parent, I have some concerns. And then finally, Hamilton Way is not a large street. It's, can accommodate basically two cars going by each other. Again, I have two four-and-a-half-year-old twins. And when I look at the concerns that I would have for changing a zoning area, it's not, does not fit this area, but also a roadway, it's not a full roadway on Hamilton Way, or what you have on Grove Street, which is a street where a number of kids congregate, there are no sidewalks, you're gonna have some potential liability issues down the road, forcing these types of developments into areas where they don't belong. So I appreciate your consideration. Last point, procedurally, there's a problem going forward, is a number of the people in our community have not received notice, which is step one, and I see that as problematic. But I do appreciate your time, and thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you, Mr. McFarland. I think there was one more person who was gonna speak.
My name is Kevin Wagner, and I've lived in the Orchard Homes area for 27 years. And originally, it was a very bucolic area. Our principal neighbors were cows, llamas, and horses. And I understand that, you know, Missoula's a fast-growing community, things are gonna change, and they have. And the changes that have occurred, certainly in development, have been generally very good and acceptable. But Grove Street, as was mentioned, Grove Street is a straight line in which I've seen incredible misbehavior on that, on that road. It's very dangerous for all the children that are, that are there now, and as we increase traffic, that will only increase the dangers. And this gentleman here mentioned the traffic at 3 o'clock, trying to get onto, well, I wouldn't even try to get onto North Reserve from Grove, which turns into River Road from the north, or, as was mentioned, Grove Street to Third going, going east. But at between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning, there is, there's no way to get right now. There's, it's impossible to get onto Third Street from Grove if you go to work. Thankfully, I'm retired now, but it's only, it's only because of the graciousness of drivers coming west to east on Target Range that you could even get onto Third Street. So to increase the traffic, you know, by 62 cars rather than 30, that's problematic. It's gonna make a bad situation worse. And I have no idea how that can be rectified because of the nature of Grove and Third, plus the danger of the little kids along Grove without sidewalks is a constant in the morning. So I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wagner. Any more public comment? Okay. I don't see anyone making a last, last-second run towards the podium. Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing, and we will go to questions from city council. Ms. Bentley.
I wanted to ask Drew or Mary to come up and talk about the certified mail issue. Thanks.
Certainly. Drew Larson, Development Services. For annexation and zoning upon annexation, it doesn't quite fall under the rezoning qualifications of state law. The only notification that must go out is two consecutive days, at least six years apart, advertised in a local newspaper, which did occur.
I think you mean six days, not six years.
You're right. I also was calling it Riverside all night, and it's Streamside. Headside and stream, and some sort of water body, correct? Anyways, yes, no, six days apart. And so, no, or notification did not go out for the zoning upon annexation or annexation. The conditional use is certified mail, and we do mail that within 150 feet. Approximately, if I remember serves, it went out to about 35, and eight, six to eight, were returned to the city as undeliverable. And so those certified mails, you do have to be present to receive them, or you have to go down to the mail, the post office, to receive them. Does that answer your questions? Do you need?
So just in terms of process for certified mail, because I think maybe we're not all familiar with that. The post office provides some kind of receipt for that, we have some proof?
Yes, yeah. So we have the little stickers that whoever, who it all went out to, and they have to sign to receive that letter. The homeowners.
Okay. I think it'd be good to get them, get that into the record. So you're asking, you're asking staff to let us know on the record who, who did receive them? Yeah, I'm wondering if we can get that, those receipts into the record.
I'm not, I'm not sure if we receive receipts back from the post office. I have the, like, this is who we mailed it to portion of that certified mailing.
But I think the question was, if someone, if you send something, certified mail, someone gets a receipt, right?
Not 100% on that one.
Point of order. This is your city clerk, and I do mail, central mail for the city. So there's certified mail that says, and that's a service provided by the post office that says an item was mailed. Doesn't say it was delivered. Certified mail says it was mailed. Certified return receipt requested is a little green card that you stick on the back of an envelope, and when the letter carrier delivers that item, somebody needs to sign for it. It does not need to be the addressee, but somebody needs to sign saying they received that piece of mail. I'm not sure what a regare is, whether it's certified mail or certified return receipt requested mail, but that's the difference between those two services offered by your U.S. Postal Service.
Thank you, city clerk, Marty Raybine. So we did certified mail?
We did certified mail, yes.
Okay. Did you have more questions while you have the floor? Yeah, I just want to be clear that we would like, I would like that, whatever we have for that process, put into the record.
I can certainly get you a list of names who I sent the certified mail to.
Sure. Okay. I have Ms. West from earlier tonight, and then Ms. Armstrong.
So I, I have some questions related to the X Protected by Levy issue, because it's one of my favorites. And I, you're, I'm maybe not the best, I'll see how many answers you have. So I was wondering if maybe, I can't remember your name. If you could, Paul. Paul, if you could maybe let us, tell us what elevation would be necessary for the site to reach two feet above flood level? And then Drew, for you, I was wondering which subdivisions or townhouse developments in the area have the condition to build two feet above flood level? I've pulled up a few. And then I also remember that we approved at least one in X Protected by Levy in my time here that had a condition to build, I think, two feet above flood level, so if you could just speak to that.
Okay. I don't have that information in front of me, who had to build two feet above, who didn't. My understanding is that Streamside actually did a letter of map revision and removed themselves from the floodplain. But I can definitely, I mean, I can, I'll have to research that to get back to you.
It looks like Ms. McCray wants to add something.
Mary McCray, Development Services. So there are a few subdivisions, not townhome developments, but subdivisions that were approved with, that were behind the levy. And prior to the new FEMA map change, they were in designation that allowed the city, per regulations, when the subdivision was approved, to recommend that pre- and post-elevation certificates be provided, and the homes be built two feet above base flood elevation. One close by is just to the south, Radisloss subdivision. A plat hasn't been filed on that yet. The Gables subdivision, kind of on Third and Hibberta, is built two feet above base flood elevation. But those were all subdivisions. So today, with the new maps, X, it's Zone X Protected by Levy, when council considered the floodplain regulations, there was a recommendation from the floodplain administrator at the time to regulate X Protected by Levy, to require that. And council decided at that time, since it was non-regulated floodplain areas, to not require it. So it's not in our current floodplain regulations.
Follow-up?
Does anybody, can anybody speak to how long, when the next FEMA map review is, and whether or not there is, whether or not you think X Protected by Levy is something that's going to be continued, since the Army Corps of Engineers is no longer certifying levies?
The county maintains this levy. I, I have no idea. It took quite a while for this map provision to get put together over many, many years, so I can't give you an estimate of when the next time that will come around.
Ms. Armstrong?
So I appreciate everybody coming down. It's nice to see folks get engaged in a civil way. And obviously, whatever notice was given to you, you saw it, and you came down, and that was great. My question for Drew, and only because you mentioned it when you first came up and showed us your pretty pictures that you took today, when were the posters put out, letting people know of the meeting was, I, I could've sworn you said, "When I put posters out today and took pictures," and I hope that's not the case. I bet it's not.
The site was done on November 17th, and the Jason property owners were notified on October 27th. That's when the mailing went out.
Guys, no, that's not in order to, we, we heard you when you gave your public comment and said that you didn't receive the notification, but please don't speak out of order. Ms. Armstrong?
Drew, when were the posters put on the fences and the posts?
The posters were put on November 17th.
Okay. Mr. Von Losberg, and then Ms. Kears.
A couple of questions. Drew, can you speak to, there you are. We don't have a lot of detail on the assessment of traffic by the city engineer, and I don't recall him being in the committee meeting and not here tonight. Can you speak to any of the, in any more detail to his assessment regarding traffic concerns?
I can't, you know, I'm generally a, you know, my, my job is more of a generalist, you know, where I know a little bit about a lot of things, but nothing specific about engineering. All I know is that they had no concerns with the proposed development, and that they thought that Grove Street and the surrounding infrastructure could adequately handle 31 new dwelling units.
Sure. Follow-up a couple. And sorry, I didn't expect that you probably would have the detail, I just thought I'd ask, since Kevin's not here. Actually, this would be a question for Mary, and it's, I'm curious if this development is, we went through a process in mid-2016 with townhome, town Teds, and amended, did an ordinance that required notification. Would this development, if it had, if we had not done that work at that time, which one of the things I remember that was most important was providing notification to people, would this have provided, would there have been any notification to people for a TED development, had we not done that step before?
There would not have been any notification. The requirement within the TED standards that certain-sized TED developments be conditional uses are what provide the notification.
Right, and that's the step that we took in council. So I won't, I won't go into an explanation. It's probably secondary or tertiary, but it, it is important, and at some point, we should get into a discussion, just so people realize that, had we not done that last year, there would have been no notification. that last year, there would have been no notification about a project like this and that was a result of state legislation in 2011. So, last question, probably for Drew. What sort of timeframe are we under relative to approving, taking action on this item?
There is no deadline. There's no statutory deadline for conditional uses.
Okay, thanks.
Ms. Kears?
My first question is one that was asked from the Bull Pip, Bull Pip, I don't know what to call you guys out there, audience, earlier about will there be sidewalk built on the property that is going to be not included in this development?
Drew Larson, Development Services. City sidewalks are required when new development occurs and it is directly adjacent to the property, not off-site. So the existing single-family home will not have sidewalks unless they do some sort of alteration to their parking, expansion, something like that.
Thanks. My second question is for Paul. Can you confirm the acreage? I got a little confused when you were talking and then I think I figured it out. I think that there's 10.6 acres total, 6.5 of which will be park in some mix-up and 4.1-ish which will be the 31 homes. Is that correct?
Yeah, so, well, I'll just do the math again. The 6.19 acres is the open space parcel that will be zoned open space. The, and then the remainder of the project is 4.2 acres, 4.21 if you round up. And then of that, Townhouse Park, if I can read it from here, is 4.63 acres, or excuse me, .463 acres. And so just under a half acre there. And so we're, it will exceed 6.5. I think it's like 6.65 acres of total park for the project and very much, very much interconnected here today. There, we won't annex the, it's, it's, it's all together as one property. We did ask the Parks Department to put sidewalk on their chunk and even maybe to extend it further. We asked them to put parking there too. We do think it'll be an attractive spot and they respectfully declined to do those improvements. But we, you know, we, we did ask for those and we thought that it important. The colleges just thought it'd be great to have it as an asset to it.
Thanks for answering the question. I have some comments about the park thing later too.
I think that Mr. Larson wanted to, had an answer for that question too and then we'll come back to your.
Great, thanks.
So the open space is actually, it's done by the open space bond money that was approved, city-county open space bond a long time ago. And they actually have a lot of restrictions on what they can and cannot do within an open space. And I'm pretty sure that, you know, infrastructure, they cannot provide parking on-site. It's very minimal. It's a few benches here and there and trail. And just a quick clarification, the Townhouse Park, it would maintain its natural state. There would be no improvements, no amenities, no playground equipment. It would just be open space. And so, yeah.
And then, am I allowed to ask a question of the audience, the commenters? I wanted someone to repeat something.
I will allow that.
Mr. Hirschenberger, could you, on your page one of your item, you mentioned the vicinity plan and I just wanted you to repeat that part because I needed to hear it again.
So I'm by no means an expert in these kind of affairs. I'm a medical insurance guy. But in reading the information that we found, both that was mailed to us and the information that my wife found on the city's website, in the comprehensive plan, the comprehensive plan is part of the executive summary that was provided. On page seven, items 12 and 13, one of which, item 12 lists a regional plan and one of which, item 13 lists a more specific vicinity plan. The regional plan says that for that region, my understanding is that they should be between three and 11 housing units per acre. However, the vicinity plan, for our specific vicinity called out in that document, it recommends residential with four dwelling units per acre. So in our region, it does say that it's justified to have on average in the three to 11, but we're well within that and this matches the actual vicinity plan within which we fall.
Thanks. That was what I needed. I appreciate it.
Okay, I have a long list of people. We'll go Dr. Dabari.
So I am going to ask some questions, but I am also going to ask that we return this to committee just so that we can dot our i's and cross our t's. And I think it's appropriate that we try to answer some questions for the folks in the audience so that we get this on the record while they're here because they may not come, be able to come back at committee. So I have a couple of questions. I'll start with the one that I just wrote down last first. Perhaps it's to Drew. To, to Mr. Hirschenberger's point about the comp plan and the vicinity plan, can you please remind me, what would the applicable vicinity plan be?
Certainly. It's the 1990 Reserve Street Area Plan. And it did recommend it for dwelling units per acre. The Armazula's, the most recent planning document that we have.
Okay, great. So I just wanted to get that on the record. I wanted to ask a little bit about the sort of realized density of some of the adjacent city properties, or not properties, but cit, properties that are within the city limits. Those are the RT10 developments, such as the one just to the north Streamside. So do you know what the sort of realized dwelling units per acre are for, maybe you can flip back to that city limits map. Yeah, one more, yeah. What, what the realized density of those two RT10 properties are in the SZD zone two?
So my understanding under the old RLD4, and Mary can correct me if I'm wrong, is that the RLD4 was still four dwelling units per acre, but it didn't have a minimum lot size when you preserved open space. And so you could use the density from the roadways. You could use density from essentially lands that you couldn't build on riparian area. I mean, if the, your property went across the river, you know, we would use the riverbed calculating the proposed density on the whole site and so it would be narrowed. I don't know what the full density is. I can't remember how large it is. You know, the approximate lot size is six to 8,000 square feet. So I, I mean, it's got to be four dwelling units per acre on the whole thing, but.
But the actual lot size of the, or the, the lot size associated with the developed area is around 6,000, 8,000 square feet?
If memory serves, yes.
And the proposed lot size for this TED is around 6,000 square feet? Is that correct?
Yes, please. Thank you.
Paul Forsting, our, our units are about 5,200 square feet. If you look at the development directly south, that cul-de-sac with, with kind of the branch, you have some lots that range in the 5,400 to 6,000, in larger. North of us, we have the small ones around 55 and there's a bunch of them in the 6,000 square feet. But there are some larger ones. There certainly are. Right below that RT10 right there, that's Renee Court. Those are in the 5,000 range per lot.
Okay. So when we come back to committee to address this, it'd be good to have some of the actual data that Paul kind of whipped off the top of his head. I think that would be helpful to understand what the actual character of the neighborhood, neighborhood is in terms of lot sizes. And I also wanted to ask a question about building types because a number of, of the residents talked about having objection to the building type, but it's my understanding that RT10 also permits by right, two-unit houses and a variety of different housing types, right? It's, it's actually the same list that's available to RT5.4, correct?
Yes. Single detached homes, two-unit houses and two-unit townhouses would be permitted in RT10.
Right. So it's, it's an analog in terms of the types of houses that are, or types of housing types that are, are available. I think those were my questions for the time being. Yeah.
So I have a list of people and I'm going to call on this list of people. Keep in mind that this is going to go back to committee. Do you have any idea when you're going to schedule it?
Well, that is the $64,000 question. So we have basically, I think, two committee meetings left this year and that's it. Next week's, or actually, this week's is full, obviously. So the earliest it could be would be the week after and, and I have no idea what that schedule's like. So I guess we'll work towards trying to achieve that and if not, it will be after the first of the year.
Okay. Ms. McCray is indicating probably after the first of the year.
Yes.
Okay. Where was I? Ms., Ms. West? And you can, you guys can indicate if you're happy getting your questions answered in committee. It's good to get them out so that staff and everyone knows what they are. If you want to answer tonight, go ahead and say that. I have Ms. West, Ms. Bentley, Ms. Jones and Mr. Von Losberg.
I just, I didn't get an answer on the raising to, to, the elevation to two foot above floodplain and you probably also don't know that off the top of your head. So if that's an answer, we could get at our next committee meeting.
Do you want to, or we can talk about it later?
We, we could do it in committee. It's probably more appropriate. Thank you.
Let's use our microphones and let's do it in committee. Okay. Ms. Bentley?
I was just going to ask about the parking question and ask staff to consider ways to work with the, with the city engineering and parks to find a solution for the parking. So I agree, it could be an issue.
Ms. Jones? Oh, did you want to respond?
Parking for the park, parking for the, the project?
Parking for the open space.
For the open space?
Yep. So I don't need an answer tonight. I just want to put that out there and ask you to work with the other departments. Thanks.
Ms. Jones?
I just wanted to, if you could go a couple of slides back. Wait, wait, sorry, forward. You missed. It's another graphic showing a site plan there. That one.
This one?
Yes.
That's not a site plan.
Actually, it was another one that was in, I think it had a white background. It had the, the, there seems to be a, I wanted to ask you about the trail access to the open space off of Hamilton. There we go. That's it. It's outlined in red. And I just needed you to clarify, who owns that property? It looks like it's trail access from Hamilton to the open space, but then it's not.
It was, it was dedicated per the Streamside addition as an access.
So it's open to the public?
Yes.
Okay. And then secondly, with the, the park area that now is going to be dedicated as open space, I just wanted you to clarify, did you say that it will, nothing will be done to it? It will not be landscaped at all? Or will it be landscaped per Parks and Recs requirements for open space?
As my understanding is that it will maintain its natural character. That open space bonds doesn't allow you to really improve and do landscaping. It essentially sets it aside as conservation land and so it needs to be maintained in a certain way. And Ms. Erickson, who's unfortunately ill tonight, has stated that that was her intent with the dedication is that it would mimic the open space directly adjacent.
Okay, thanks. And I don't know if you can clarify it now or if Mr. Nugent can help or if we bring this up in committee, but we have a 1995 vicinity plan. We have a 2015 growth plan. 20 years later, a lot has changed, of course. And I think some clarification on how the vicinity plan and growth plan interact and what has more weight would be great. I don't know if you can answer that in a couple of sentences or we put it off to committee?
I certainly can't tonight.
And then the last thought I wanted to throw out there for committee, and this is to Paul really, and the developer. I understand this is, this is more dense than adjacent neighborhoods, yet it's just setting aside zoning, it's, it's, there's a whole spectrum of density. And we're talking about neighborhood character and compatibility. And I have to say, when you see a subdivision and it's all painted the same color, it just doesn't really strike the same, good tone. It, if we're, personally, I think having a palette that maybe is reflective of the neighborhood north and mixes in a little bit better, it's just something that goes down a lot easier. So that's something that perhaps can be discussed at committee in more detail.
Mr. Von Losberg?
My questions and requests have been covered by others.
I'm just dying to make a comment, but we're not in the comment phase, but, but I'm chairing this meeting, so I'm going to make a quick comment because I might not be around when this comes back on city council. And my comments apply whether this conditional use is approved or whether it's a different subdivision, because I just wanted to make some comments about who is using the open space at the end of the trail and who uses the trail. This is going to be, if and when it's annexed, it's in Ward 6 and Ward, this part of Ward 6 really doesn't have a lot of parks and trails. And when the Milwaukee Trail went in, myself and a lot of our neighbors and families and little kids started biking and walking up and down that trail all the time. It's just been a wonderful thing for the neighborhood. And I don't even know how many times I, my husband and I have run out to Grove Street and then there's no more trail and so we turn around and go back. And it will just be really great for all the families to have a little more trail because of the conservation easement and even having a little area to let your dog run around and turn around and be like, I've got to this destination on the banks of the river and then go back to the neighborhood will be a really, a really nice thing. I, I feel like this is going to be a little parcel that's just used by people that get there by foot and by bike and that people, people that live there. So that's my perspective on, on who would be using this because the question did come up, but that doesn't have, that's not related to the, the zoning or anything like that. And who knows if this will be back by the end of the, the year. So, okay. Burning questions before we close this. Ms. Kears?
Sorry I walked out. I walked back in and you were talking about just trail access and I was wondering if I could comment on one thing I had heard from the Parks Department about parking at this site for the park use? I'd asked about parking here in relation to the trail because I too feel like folks will drive here, not many, but some. And I was kind of looking at it like the Seventh Street access for Kelly Island. And there are some concerns that the Parks Department had about that that they could go into. But what they mentioned to me was that someday when the Milwaukee Trail extends past the river to Mullin Road and beyond, the idea is that we could have a trailhead at the wastewater treatment facility, which would provide a lot of parking and we could then point people there and folks wouldn't need to park here. And I just thought that was an interesting idea that should be aired because if you don't know that the Parks Department is thinking about this and worrying about this too, then maybe you think they just don't care. But they're, they're noodling it over and I, maybe we'll hear more about that as this process goes forward, but I wanted to share. So thanks for letting me.
Okay. And with those two comments on the trail, we are going to move on from this item and I really appreciate everyone coming tonight to participate in the discussion. Oh, I, you implied that you were sending it back to committee. Do you want to officially send it back to committee?
I will officially send it back to committee.
Okay, thank you. So that's what's happening. We're going to move ahead. The mayor's not here, so there's no communications from the mayor. General comments from city council, starting with Ms. Armstrong, Ms. West, Dr. Dabari?
Before everyone leaves, I just want to thank you so much for taking the time to come out here and, and talk to us. I think it'll, it'll help us work through the deliberative process. Thanks.
Ms. Bentley?
I want to make sure that everybody knows about the Winter Fair happening at the Missoula County Fairgrounds on December 16th and 17th from 1:00 to 6:00. They'll be skating with Santa and free hot cocoa and vintage market and handmade goods and lots of fun stuff to do. So come down. It's free admission.
Mr. Hess, Mr. Von Losberg. Feel that I had something to say, but it escapes me, so we'll keep going. Ms. Kears, Ms. Becerra, Ms. Hettall, Ms. Jones?
I have something, but I think I'm going to actually hold off until next week because I want to give it, it's, everybody's tired tonight and it was a long meeting. But next week I will talk to the fact that Judge Pregerson from the Ninth Circuit passed away about a week ago and was one of the most influential judges underneath the Supreme Court, in the Circuit Court. I knew him. He was amazing. He had a huge influence on huge bodies of law and he, Montana is in the Ninth Circuit. He loved Montana. He was born in East LA and.
is in the Ninth Circuit, he loved Montana, he was born in East LA and he was a Los Angeles native and he spent a lot of time in Montana because he loved Montana so much. So I have a couple of Great War stories, but I'm going to save them till next week so that we give Harry Pregerson a good send-off.
Mr. Von Losberg?
Sorry, I wasn't prepared when he came around. I just wanted to urge everyone in the community, my colleagues and anyone watching or in the audience, to read the Accepting Sam article that was in the Bozeman Daily Chronicle that recounts a really tragic story about a member of the trans community, a member of the broader community who we lost and it's, it's worth everybody taking a read to understand the challenges that that, that individual and the broader community face, so, thanks.
I remember now that I wanted to remind my colleagues that we have a short COW meeting, Committee of the Whole meeting on Wednesday for people to give updates from the boards and commissions that you serve on. They can be informal, but I want people to be thinking about all the boards and commissions and report back so that those are fresh in people's mind after the new year when we redo the appointments to the boards and commissions. Okay, I think we're almost done. Under miscellaneous communications, petitions, reports and announcements, we have the administratively approved agreement report, any comments on that? Okay, we are adjourned. Thanks, everyone.